Okay. I think we'll go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. If everyone could please take their seats, we'll get started. We're here for the Mountain View City Council Candidate Forum. And I'll first take a few minutes to review the rules and procedures. In the meantime, does anyone have any questions? Okay. I'm Jan Pepper, and I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. All of you candidates reviewed and signed the League of Women Voters ground rules. And most importantly, everyone will treat each other with respect, and candidates will not interrupt each other. Our timer, right over here. We'll use a phone to set each segment of time, and then hold up a yellow paddle when 15 seconds are left, and a red stop sign when time has expired. At that time, I will say thank you. You may finish your sentence, and then we will move on to the next candidate or next question. Are there any questions about the format or procedures? Okay. And I have verified the pronunciation of your names, but I will go over that in a moment. So I'd like to welcome the candidates and the audience members to the Mountain View City Council Candidate Forum. I am with the League of Women Voters Los Altos Mountain View and am today's moderator. First, a few housekeeping items. Our forum will last 90 minutes and is being recorded by KMVT. All League forums will be recorded and available on our elections page at LWV-LAMV, League of Women Voters Los Altos Mountain View, dot org, about two days after each event, as well as on our YouTube channel through a link on our website. We would like to thank the Mountain View Voice for cosponsoring today's forum. And there are some members of the Voice staff in the audience tonight, including Voice Editor Karen Kevin Forastieri. Can you raise your hand? There he is. Okay. And Clay Lambert. Okay. The Peninsula, Clay is the Peninsula Editorial Director for the nonprofit parent company of The Voice and its siblings. So other Voice staff, if you're here, could you please raise your hands? Great, thank you for being here. They have helped to spread the word about tonight's forum and suggested questions to ask. KMVT is also a cosponsor tonight. Thank you, Josh, Jim, and Jacob, for recording it so that voters can watch it later. Questions for candidates were submitted in advance by community members, League members, and Mountain View Voice staff. Similar questions were combined to maximize the topics covered. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization of all genders that promotes informed, active participation in government. We do not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties, but after careful study, we do take positions on some political issues. The League invites anyone who is interested in supporting democracy and local government to join us. You will find easy voter guides, lists of our forums, voter registration forms, and other helpful information at the League table in the back of the room. Now, a little bit about Mountain View and this office that these candidates are vying for. Mountain View's population has grown to about 81,000 economically and ethnically diverse residents. The city council has seven members. You may vote for four of these nine candidates in this year's election. Ballots were mailed October 7th, so you may already have yours. Here is the format for today's forum. Each candidate will make a two-minute opening statement. We've asked them to include the qualifications, experience, and strengths that make them well-suited to this office. Questions were selected to be relevant to all candidates and to provide useful information to the audience about issues in this race. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question. Finally, the candidates will each have one minute to make a closing statement. Our timer will signal to each candidate when 15 seconds remains and when time has expired. We ask our candidates to abide by the following. First, speaking order. This will be rotated, so each candidate will have at least one chance to speak first and last. I will read the order before each question. Time limits. When the stop sign is held up, I will say thank you, and candidates may complete their current sentence. Respect. Candidates will not interrupt each other. And fairness. Campaign marketing materials will not be worn or visitable in the room. Now, I would like to introduce, in alphabetical order, the nine candidates who are running for Mountain View City Council. Chris Clark, Devin Conley, Jose Gutierrez, Nicholas Hargis, John McAllister, Eric Poicon, Emily Ramos, Pat Showalter, Ida Rose Sylvester. Thank you all for participating in today's forum. We are now ready to begin. So we will first start with opening statements. You each have two minutes, and we will go in the following order. Emily, Chris, Nicholas, Devin, Jose, John, Ida Rose, Eric, Pat. Emily, go ahead.
Oh, yay, it's on. Hi, my name is Emily Ann Ramos, and I have the privilege of being your city council member for the past two years. And now I'm running for a full term. I was honored to be appointed when a vacancy appeared. In that time, we passed a strong housing element, which also made the city of Mountain View the only city in Santa Clara County to receive the pro-housing designation from the state. We passed a very strong economic vitality strategy and a wildlife strategic plan so that we can help protect our environment, especially in the areas such as North Bay Shore, where precious creatures like our burrowing owls are staying. I'm focused on housing affordability, climate resilience, and civic engagement. In my day job, I worked at a housing advocacy organization focused on policies to address displacement, which are tenant protections and preservation of affordable housing. Through that job, I'm able to see what other cities are doing to address the displacement issue that is facing us on a regional level. I hope to earn your vote on or by November 5. I am excited to hear the great ideas of my colleagues and my fellow candidates. And I am excited to do that with the League of Women Voters, which I am honored to be a member of League of Women Voters and an active member in the Affordable Housing Committee for the League of Women Voters. So thank you so much for this opportunity to share our hopes and dreams of what we have for our city. And I, once again, I hope to earn your support, endorsement, and passion for our race. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Chris?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Clark, and I've served Mountain View for 15 of the 17 years that I've lived here, including eight years on our city council and seven years on our commissions. I also had the honor of serving as Mountain View's mayor and vice mayor. During my time on the council, I earned a reputation as a pragmatic consensus builder who worked closely with my colleagues to get things done. We balanced our budgets, even during the toughest of times, and permitted thousands of new housing units, including subsidized units for our teachers and first responders. We also raised our minimum wage, supported our renters and working families during COVID, prepared for climate change, added nearly a dozen new parks, and renovated the beautiful facility that we're sitting in this evening. I'm proud of our accomplishments, but there's still much work left to do. We have two longtime Mountain View council members terming out of office this year and three more in 2026. So we need to elect experienced candidates who will provide a healthy level of continuity while we also welcome new leadership. I have the experience necessary to hit the ground running and maintain our reputation as a well-run city that values its residents, neighborhoods, small businesses, and, most importantly, fact-based decision-making. In addition to experience, what sets me apart is my breadth of support. I'm endorsed by our Congresswoman Anna Eschew, both of our state lawmakers, our county supervisor Joe Semidion, and many former mayors and residents who span the political spectrum. They support me because they know I work hard, listen to all perspectives, and value sound policymaking over politics. With nine candidates, I know you face a tough decision about who to elect. As you evaluate us tonight, please keep in mind that you can vote for up to four of us to best represent you in uncertain times. I look forward to our conversation and hope to earn your support this evening.
Thank you, Chris. Nicholas?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas Hargis, and I'm proud to be your candidate for Mountain View City Council. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Mountain View Voice, as well as KMVT for hosting us. These three organizations are at the heart of Mountain View's democracy. So what does the Mountain View of tomorrow look like? To me, it's a place to call home, with safe neighborhoods built around beautiful parks, economic opportunity, and lifelong friendship. I grew up locally, graduating from St. Francis High School. Today, I'm proud to be a senior field representative for Congresswoman Anna Eschew, cutting through bureaucracy for Mountain View residents. My guiding principles are equitable growth, public safety, sustainability, and community well-being. We must take on the high cost of living by making it less costly for homeowners to renovate and strengthening renter protections. We can tackle inequality by building affordable housing for our vulnerable populations, including seniors, large families, and people with disabilities. Public safety is the most important service a government provides. We need to continue supporting our police and fire departments. Tackling climate change requires bold leadership. Transportation makes up 60% of our carbon emissions. Let's build a citywide EV charging network and make our public transit more efficient. And our roads, sidewalks, and bike lanes need to be better maintained. The common thread that unites my policy is community well-being. That's why I'm focused on expanding childcare, developing a low-income laundry assistance program, and banning the sale of e-cigarettes.
Thank you, Nicholas. Devin?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Devin Conley, and I'm the current president of the Mountain View Wisman School Board. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, as well as KMVT and the Mountain View Voice for putting on this forum tonight and giving us the opportunity to talk about the future of our city. I am running for city council because I believe that family-friendly city planning benefits not just children and families, but all of Mountain View. I moved to Mountain View about 18 years ago, and since then, I have taught and volunteered in our public schools, served on our Parks and Recreation Commission, and I was elected to the school board in 2018. I have a master's in city planning from UC Berkeley, a degree in architecture from Yale, and a master's in education from Stanford. And over the last 22 years, I've spent my career working directly with children and families at the intersection of education and city policy. I love serving on our public school board, but every day, I see where the needs of our students extend beyond the classroom and are tied to our larger community's well-being. From housing to transportation, parks to sustainability. My priorities for a family-friendly Mountain View include creating thriving neighborhoods, prioritizing public safety, and ensuring a healthy community. With my unique perspective as a former teacher and a parent now in our public school district, my expertise in city planning and architecture, and my experience passing and getting policies implemented as a school board member, I know I could serve our community well. I'm honored to be endorsed by Congresswoman Anna Eschew and our county supervisor Joe Semidion, as well as the Mountain View police officers and firefighters, the Dean Democratic of Silicon Valley, and Mountain View YIMBY. I would be honored to earn your vote this evening, and you can learn more about my campaign at devinconley.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. Jose?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jose Gutierrez Jr., and many of you know me as a former soccer coach. I've been involved as an IYSO soccer coach for, I don't know, about 10 years. I coach my daughters. I want to thank my daughter Grace Gutierrez, who's my campaign manager. You're doing a great job. And Elena Gutierrez, Director of Media and Social Relations. Perfect. I thank you for everything. This has been a journey for us and a family adventure, but more importantly, we want to make a difference in the community. In 2015, I was appointed to a school board that was chaotic. 2016, I was re-elected to that position. From 2016 to 2020, I served with the honorable Bill Lambert and Nolan Wheeler. At the end of that, we were effective, organized, and together. We were able to get things done. We brought district-wide solutions to district-wide problems. At the time, we had a vision for what a portrait of a graduate would look like, and we made it happen. We had successful results for reclassifications of our English-language learning students. We realized that that standard of the test was too hard and beyond expectations of what any child should be able to pass because it was unfair. So we rooted that systemic bias out and replaced it with something that was more egalitarian so that everyone could succeed and have a fair shot at success in academics. That's what it's all about with me. Problem solving, responsibility, accountability. I'm high-energy. I don't settle for the status quo. I'm your outside candidate. With me, I like to push a little bit because I want to give back what I can together by creating a moment where we have a difference of opinion to be a moment where we can build something better together. That's how we were able to negotiate with the city to create teacher housing. Our board was functional and organized enough to get that done. We had balanced budgets. We worked with city council. We were effective. And in 2020, we passed the bond to finally pay off the school-teacher housing project. Now we have teachers moving in, I think, early next year in January. That's what I'm about, effective change. As your vice chair for the Environmental Planning Commission, I hope to serve at the next level at city council, and I can't wait to hear the ideas of my fellow candidates here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jose. John?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm John McAllister. I'm running for city council because I believe in continuing to improve the lives of Mountain View residents through pragmatic, thoughtful leadership. I've had the privilege of calling Mountain View home for many years. My journey started when my dad moved up here to work for Lockheed. I've been deeply invested, not just as a resident, but as a business owner for over 22 years. In fact, I am the Mountain View Chamber Businessperson of the Year. I'm proud to say I'm the only candidate running who has owned a business in this community. As a prayer of premium ice cream... Pause. I've learned firsthand what it takes to build something successfully from the ground up. My business degree from UC Berkeley Haas School of Business and having a certified public accountant's certificate have shaped my approach to solving problems. I've always strived to be pragmatic, fair, and committed to finding the best solutions for Mountain View. Over the past 20 years, I've had the honor of serving you as your mayor, vice mayor, city council member, chair of the Performing Arts, Environmental Planning Commission, PTA treasurer, and school site council. In that time, I've proven my ability to lead, always focusing on what's best for our community, whether it's ensuring the city was fiscally responsible during challenging times or advocating for key issues like affordable housing, public safety, and open spaces. I'm here today because Mountain View needs experienced, level-headed leadership, especially with two senior council members terming out. I bring that leadership and a deep understanding of how to get things done for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Ida Rose?
Good evening. I'm Ida Rose Sylvester, and I'm very excited to be here tonight. It's an honor to talk to you about my experience and my qualifications that will help me be an excellent city council member in the city I love and have called home for 25 years. I have served on two advisory bodies for several years, including the Human Relations Commission and the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. In both of these roles, I got big things done, including a multi-year study on the history of housing discrimination in our city and policy recommendations that are now enacted for our climate future. I'm also a City of Mountain View mediator, and I created an innovative nonprofit in the midst of the pandemic called Appetite for Good. We simultaneously saved businesses while alleviating food insecurity in our city. I also lead on the board of multiple nonprofits, which give me a unique lens through various aspects of our city, including CSA, CHAC, the Historical Association, the Coalition for Sustainable Planning, and Carbon-Free Mountain View. From this experience, I gained several qualifications, including in-depth knowledge about our community from a policy perspective on housing, climate, our social needs, our neighborhood needs, zoning, history, and design. I also have a depth of knowledge about the people in our community, its cultures, organizations, our business leaders, and even our city staff, which I've had the honor to work very closely with. And I have proof that I can solve big problems, like I did with my nonprofit. I have a relentless passion for the pursuit of justice and for solutions that serve all of our residents now and for those who come in the future. And I have a depth of relationships that will make me successful. I'm well-known, well-regarded, and trusted. Endorsements that back me up include the Democratic Party, Sierra Club, and the Los Altos Town Crier. Thank you.
Thank you, Ida Rose. Eric?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming here tonight. Whoops. Can y'all hear me okay? Okay, perfect. My name is Eric Poicon, and the reason why I'm running for Mountain View City Council is because I believe that no single mother, no working family, or child should ever feel the fear of being displaced in a city they've grown to love. I was raised by a single mother of four and know the atrocities or what it's like to struggle just to keep a roof over your head. And it's what compelled me to dedicate my life to serving families just like mine. Some of the work I've done here locally in Mountain View has been being your COVID-19 positive relief team lead at the height of the pandemic, making sure not only that families were fed, but ensuring they were housed, providing rental assistance programs wherever they were needed. I also, during the 2020 census, fought misinformation against Trump, making sure that not only our community members were counted, but our most vulnerable community members, our documented members, were counted because they were fearful of signing a census was a death sentence for them. Now I have the privilege of serving as your Human Relations Commissioner, where I'll be leading projects in partnership with the county, making our community much more aware about deepening our relationship with our queer community members and also raising awareness of how we can be more readily prepared, especially our most vulnerable community members when natural disasters happen. What I bring to the table is really compassionate leadership. I'm not one who just likes sitting behind a board seat. I'm someone that likes to be active and be present in front of community members, being willing to listen and hear and mobilize them in whatever shape or form I may be able to. I'm proud to be endorsed. I'm one of four endorces for the Planned Parenthood of Armonte. Proud to be endorsed also by Supervisor Joe Semidion, the Democratic Party, as well as our local union SEIU 521.
Thank you, Eric. Pat?
Well, hi, everybody. It's great to be here. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and The Voice and KMVT for helping with this forum. I rarely thought that candidate forums are just a fabulous way to learn about the candidates because you get to see us all at the same time. And not only do they put on forums related to council races, but pretty much every race up and down the ticket you could think of, up to the state level. I'm the current mayor of Mountain View. It's a great honor and privilege. I've been on council for eight years, and I've been a champion during that time for housing, sustainability, and equity. I've earned a reputation of treating people with respect and building collaboration. Keeping our communities safe and providing excellent city services are crucial. I'm running because Mountain View is my home. I raised my children here, and I've been involved with numerous neighborhoods, school, and community groups over the last 40 years. For instance, I served on the League of Women Voters Board for about a decade and have remained a member of the Housing Committee ever since. My kids went to public schools, and so did I. I know this community, and I know the job. I want to use this experience that I've gained as your mayor and council member for another four years on city council. The existential crisis of climate change and housing are far from solved. I want to keep seeing that we move in the right direction to build a Mountain View that continues to be a great place to live, work, and play for generations. I'm the only civil engineer running or on council. I'm also the only environmental professional. This technical expertise gives me a unique ability to analyze infrastructure issues and understand climate change. I look forward to the rest of the forum and answering what I'm sure are very probing questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, we'll go to our first question, and each of you will have 60 seconds to respond. The question is, pick a topic that residents tell you the city is doing well but could be doing even better. Many changes take years to achieve. Name one improvement that can be introduced and realized within a single year. And the order we will go in is Jose, John, Ida Rose, Eric, Pat, Emily, Chris, Nicholas, Devin. Jose?
Thank you. That's a great question to start with. So to make it within one year time, I think one of the goals I had, which I was going to speak to later in my conclusion, I think what we need is better oversight when it comes down to negotiations with outside entities like Google. One of the big criticisms I've had to speak to and defend has been our inability to negotiate with Google on equal footing. I'm a proponent because I work in the legal field as a paralegal, and I'm involved with litigations with high-tech companies that we needed to have outside counsel help our staff negotiate with outside legal counsel that's in the top 10 in the legal profession. We were outmaneuvered and outgunned at the end, and that led to the loss of over 340 inclusionary affordable housing units. Under my watch, that's not going to happen because we need to do better, and we can. And we can do this quickly. Thank you.
John?
So if I restate the question, it's what residents like about what we've been doing for Mountain View?
What is the city doing well but could be doing even better? And what improvement can be done within a single year?
I hear a lot of compliments about our parks, that we've maintained them well. We try to utilize them for all the local sports. We use them for the dog walkers after night and morning. People just enjoy sitting through the shade and so forth. And what we need to do, need to do better, is to, one, increase the amount of parks that we have. And how can we do that? Well, we could possibly work better with the school district to make sure we assure ourselves of parks. And so that's one thing that could be done recently, fairly quickly. The other is possibly we need to buy. We need to prioritize buying more open space. So as the city continues to grow, we have that open space so people can release energy and get out and relax. And that's part of being a quality of life, is just being able to relax and look around and have some trees. Oh, that's another thing. We could start putting more trees out. That's one thing I forget. Yeah, parks and trees. Something that they like, something that they give us free trees. I have a free tree in my front yard. So that's something that we could do across the board.
Thank you, John. Ida Rose?
One topic people talk to me all about is public transportation and safe, active transportation in the city. People love our climate here. They love to be able to bike and walk. And they also love our Mountain View shuttle. However, we're getting some funding cuts for the shuttle. We're losing our funding from Google. People don't want to see the shuttle cut. They want to see it expanded, the hours, where it goes, how it syncs up with Caltrain and VTA and with bus lines. They just want it to be more accessible to them at all different times. They want to be able to use it to go out to dinner on the weekends downtown. And it's something we could very simply do. We know how to do it. We know how to run the bus service. We just need to find some money, and we could instantly get up and start running again with more buses within a year, well within a year.
Thank you, Ida Rose. Eric?
Thank you for the question. So yeah, one of the many things I hear that Mountain View does well has been how we've been doing regarding sustainability been doing regarding sustainability and how we're trying to meet our carbon-neutral goals by 2035, though ambitious. I think that's something that all of us are pretty much have at the forefront of priority concern. But the most pervasive one has been, of course, affordable housing and homelessness, how the costs continue to remain high, and it's essentially making it more difficult to be able to afford a home here, especially those with fixed income with our elderly communities. I think one of the programs I would like to see implemented within the year and that we've seen great success with is our General Basic Income Program, seeing how people within the most impoverished situations being emboldened and being empowered to pay off some of their debts and still remain housed and creating wraparound services around that, too. I think because we've had the statistics about it, we can be successful.
Thank you, Eric. Pat.
That's a really interesting question, and I am surprised that nobody answered the one I came up with in my head the first time. People do say that we're doing a lot of good things. I hear a lot about safety. You know, people really appreciate our police and our fire, but I'm not going to talk about that. I'm going to talk about the downtown. People love our downtown, and they particularly love the pedestrian mall that we've put in place during COVID and since then. And we are, you know, it's a phased project. We're in phase two, where we have kind of a semi-permanent situation, but phase three will be a permanent situation where there will be a flush layer all the way across. But one thing that we can do, I think, in the next year to make it better is just improve the programming. We have great programming. We have music every Wednesday night, but those things bring so much joy to our community.
Thank you, Pat. Emily.
One of the things that I think that I've been hearing we've been doing very well is outreach on a broad level. So we have programs like the Language Leadership Academies. So we started off with the Spanish Leadership Academy, and we have a cohort of Spanish-speaking residents that can outreach to their communities and was super helpful during the pandemic. And then we continued that program with the Chinese Leadership Academy. As we look at outreach, there's other things like our neighborhood associations. I serve, along with the mayor, on our Council Neighborhoods Committee, and we have a great grant program to help community build. What we can do to improve that is start helping them work together on making that money more efficient. Because the amazing thing is, everyone really loves that grant program. It's not enough money for everyone for everything that they want. So we have to learn how to be more efficient with it and see how we can help each other make it work. Because people are just living their lives. They're not going to go to every single council meeting like I am, because I love those kinds of things. Thank you so much.
Chris.
So I was going to talk about downtown, but since it's already been mentioned, the other thing that I'm hearing, just walking around, is people go back to what's been happening most recently and touches their daily lives. And folks are really happy about some of the infrastructure projects that are finally moving post-COVID. So whether it's the addition of safe routes to schools or just repaving El Camino, which granted isn't the city, it's Caltrans, but we worked with them closely on that. So people bring up infrastructure a lot, but they're also frustrated that it's taken so long to bring a lot of those projects to fruition. For example, the road diet and creating a safer corridor along California Street. And granted, you know, some of those got backed up due to COVID, but there should be things that we can do within a year, like conceptualize a trial for certain things to make our streets and corridors safer, and then implement that trial on a segment of that. It shouldn't take years to bring a trial like that to fruition. And so I think if we can move forward with doing that in a more efficient and effective way, that would make a big difference for folks here in Mountain View.
Thank you, Chris. Nicholas.
People love the new pedestrian mall, but they're very concerned about the downtown vacancy rate. The downtown vacancy rate is twice as high as anywhere else in the city. And I don't think that we should let those vacancies go to waste. Our windows need to give advertising to the other businesses in downtown that could use the support. The city is currently working on a facade program and a window program to allow for pop-ups in those vacant spaces. We need to get that implemented as soon as possible so that we support our small businesses who have been downtown for years and show potential business owners the potential of those spaces. I also believe that we need to make sure that our first-floor retail isn't a lobby for offices upstairs. I'm very proud that last night the city council made sure that that wasn't the case on 198 Castro, the agave site.
Thank you, Nicholas. Devin.
Thank you. There are so many great ideas from my colleagues up here tonight. It's actually very exciting to think about a year ahead of us to work on these things. Mountain View is one of the few places as a city that has said it wants to increase access to childcare. I've heard a lot of people who were very excited when Mountain View first opened a preschool program, but it's too small. And we know that there's an incredible need for high-quality childcare and preschool experiences for children in our community. The Mountain View Wisman School District has a preschool program currently, and part of it is state-funded. But we know that there's still more need within our community, even amongst our staff. And so recently, Google canceled their leases on two preschool sites that they were leasing from the school district. This is an incredible opportunity. We can't fund it alone as a school district, but in partnership with the city, we could get many more preschool slots within our community that are affordable to a wide range of incomes.
Thank you, Devin. Next question. Is the city likely to meet the housing element's commitments on time? Has anything changed since the element was approved that can affect success? How can the council help to hit the target? And the order we will go in will be Pat, Eric, Ida Rose, John, Jose, Devin, Nicholas, Chris, and Emily. Go ahead, Pat.
Well, it's like looking at a crystal ball to really say, will we be able to meet this or not? Because we have zoned for it. We have a very robust housing element. And we put in a hefty percentage over of areas that are zoned, so that it doesn't all have to be developed by any stretch of the imagination. That said, the city doesn't do the development. Developers do, and the economic forces are really an issue. So the fact that the interest rates went up to 7% has really slowed down housing development. And they just went down recently, so that's a good thing. The things that the city can do is we have a great housing department that has a lot of know-how for how to get money that people need to do affordable housing. That's something that's...
Thank you, Pat. Eric.
Thank you for the question. I think pertaining on whether or not we are going to keep up with our commitments, I think it's more important that we do so, because if y'all remembered, when we were working on the housing element, it was turned in at a later period than what it was intended for. And because of that, now we're facing five building remedies as a result. And if we don't continue committing to those obligations, we're going to face more building remedies in the near future, and that's, I'm sure, not even the council nor our residents want to face that. And I think the council should be acting in good faith, not only based off the work that the Planning Commission has done, but also many of our coalitions that put in time and effort in order to see this housing element pass. I mean, we have to, this includes developing a strategy to prevent displacement. Those are things that we need to ensure, as we're seeing the cost of housing rising, even with Measure V implemented, the cost, people aren't able to afford a $70 a month increase for years to come. So I think the more important thing is for us to set up a timeline.
Thank you, Eric. Ida Rose.
I think we are at risk for meeting our housing element numbers, to be quite honest. But anything can change. We have seven-year cycles in Silicon Valley, typically with our economy. So we might hit a boom somewhere that will help us, but right now, we've seen some concern that North Bay Shore development won't happen, because Google has been pulling out of some of the work that they're doing there. And as noted, money costs a lot more money now, and inflation makes everything expensive to do. So I think we are at risk, especially in North Bay Shore, unless we have an economic turnaround, which we can't control. But one thing we can control is improving some of our zoning, like our R3 zoning, which will allow us to zone for denser housing that would help the middle class, especially in parts of our city, in that we have some control over.
Thank you. John.
I don't think we're going to make it. The housing element started out mid, you know, towards the enter of COVID, and people were basing it on assumptions that we're going to continue to grow or that it's going to recover pretty quick. But it's not happening. And recently, there was an article in the paper about vacancy rate for office buildings at 22%, the highest level ever. So that sort of indicates that businesses are tightening up, businesses are closing up, businesses are laying people off. So if there's no demand for housing, developers aren't going to be coming knocking at our door to say, well, we're going to build here, we're going to build there. And it's going to be a time that we might have to reconsider that if somebody wants something, maybe we have to give some concessions. Maybe we have to, you know, bankroll some of this ourselves. But as long as the economy is contracting right now, and the costs, even though they're coming down, it's still going to be if there's a demand. And that's what we have to wait for and see what happens. We maybe have to...
Thank you. Jose.
Okay, great. Just checking. Look, I'm the vice chair for the EPC, the Environmental Planning Commission. Chris and I worked hard to be able to do the hard lift of being able to get community input into the housing element plan. We've spoke to everyday folks from nonprofit organizations, developers, and members of the community as a whole. And we try to do the best we can to get loads of support so that we can have this be approved. The fact of the matter is that when Google pulled out and they said no to those 350 affordable housing units, that set us back. We immediately took action, and we spoke to our city staff, and we said, hey, by when do we need to tell the state that we may not meet certain deadlines? Because we do have a timeline. There is a schedule. These things are a reality, and we have to give those updates to the state periodically. So depending on what comes our way for review and approval for said developments, because we are at the mercy of developers, let's not kid ourselves. We do the best we can to inform the state where we're at, and that's what we need to do continuously, because we have no other choice but be responsible for that.
Thank you. Devin.
So 33% of the students in the Mountain View Wisman School District qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch. This means for a family of four that they earn $55,500 or less. These families qualify for very low-income affordable housing, and our housing element calls for over 2,700 units of very low-income affordable housing. It is incredibly hard to get built. It takes significant subsidies. It's very expensive. And I think this is one area of the housing element that's really at risk of not being realized unless we focus on it. I know that creative partnerships, pulling down federal and state funds, as well as working with our regional government and other supporters, can help us find funding to do this, but it's going to take work. The housing bond that had been planned for $20 billion for the Bay Area did not get put on the ballot this year, so we're going to need to keep advocating at these other levels to be able to build very low-income housing.
Thank you. Nicholas.
In 2023, we did not keep pace in order to meet our housing element goals. So right now, the answer is no. And unfortunately, the slow growth in the North Bay Shore neighborhood is also not a good sign. The good news is, though, that we have more than 1,000 units in the pipeline. We need to make the permitting process more efficient. We have a new staff, a new Community Development Director, Christian Murdock, and we need to work with him very closely to understand exactly what we need in order to pass these permits. I'm happy that the city council yesterday approved an application for a pro-housing grant and that we're seeking money from the federal government, in this case, $4 million for preservation and acquisition. We need to continue doing that to leverage funds and put our money towards affordable housing projects.
Thank you. Chris.
So while we aren't on track right now, the good news is that we do have a really solid housing element in place. And so what we need to do is continue to do our best to implement that. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, by and large, the city doesn't build housing. We put the policy frameworks in place to hopefully incentivize it. So what, we can't force developers to build housing. So what can we do in the interim? I've been on council through multiple economic cycles, two recessions, and a really significant boom period. So hope isn't lost, but we can't, we don't want to lose the time that we have. So what we can do now is continue implementing our housing element. We can pass Prop 5, which will allow us to bring the regional measure back and better fund affordable housing in the future. And so that way, we kind of set the stage for when interest rates do come down and we have a better boom cycle and folks are building again, we aren't behind the eight ball and trying to play catch-up like we were last time. So really, what we need to do is put all the plans and frameworks in place now, so we aren't behind the eight ball later.
Thank you, Chris. Emily.
So what people generally don't notice is that our housing element is more than just our arena goals and the buffer and the zoning. The housing element also includes a lot of programs that remove the barriers to housing and something very important, affirmatively furthering fair housing, and that includes programs against displacement. Overall, most cities are generally good about meeting their market-rate housing goals. It's when we start looking at the affordable housing goals. And so we want to take a look at things like our Community Ownership Action Plan and making sure that we have funding for that affordable housing. So it's important that people here vote for Measure G. As we also go forward, I think we need to keep to the spirit of the commitments that we have made to these housing elements, and we have a community that holds us accountable, and we work closely with HCD, or our community also works closely with HCD to tell us if we're not meeting that spirit of commitment. So I feel very optimistic about meeting our goals in the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. Empty storefronts on Castro, a downtown office vacancy rate of about 25%, and long vacant and blighted properties in commercial areas are issues. What ideas do you have in one of these areas that you believe would be supported by a majority of the council? The order we will go in is Ida Rose, Eric, Pat, Emily, Chris, Nicholas, Devin, Jose, John. Ida Rose.
Focusing in on empty storefronts, I am really, really excited for the potential of our downtown. If we reimagine what downtown could be and it not just be a few retail shops and a whole lot of restaurants, if we can imagine uses that bring back daytime population, as well as stretch out different kinds of uses that bring more families in on different times and different days of the week, I think will be golden. Now, some of this is going to require how we market our downtown, but some of it is how we will allow permitting for different uses downtown. People have talked about recreation centers, both like an escape room, like a commercial one, but also a city-owned recreation center where families can meet and gather that could use up some of the large retail spaces that are currently there. We could bring in some daytime uses like a coworking space or a business incubator, so we could bring back some of that, the missing population that is no longer there having lunch and shopping in the middle of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So we do have an economic vitality strategy, which offers a comprehensive evaluation of approaches that we can take in order to best support our storefronts. I think one of the ones, especially with the empty ones, is, and one that I think that council would be in favor of implementing, is supporting a commercial vacancy tax. And the reason why I say this is because especially for those places that are chronically vacant, I would hate to believe that property owners are holding off on renting it out so much so that they can sell it at a higher price. And I think this would be an essential push to those property owners to lease it out to someone at a market-rate value instead of an expensive one, as we're seeing right now. And I think as we're transitioning from retail to much more entertainment, as our colleague has said, I think it is trying to reimagine how our downtown streets look like, not only for the familiar aspect of it, but also trying to bring youth entertainment into it as well.
Thank you. Pat.
Well, I'm glad Eric mentioned the Economic Vitality Plan. I really think that is what's key to getting a lot of the vacancies downtown filled. It is 164-action plan. When it came to council the first time, it was very, very theoretical. And we sent it back and said, no, we need things on the ground that will make a difference. I heard a talk today through the Chamber of Commerce about how they're working on that. And they've basically analyzed the vacancies in all of the storefronts and figured out what is the issue for each vacancy. And some of those issues are things that we can handle pretty straightforwardly and easily. Others are more difficult. I think that kind of triage is helpful, and I think that one of the things that we could all agree on is upping our grant renovation project, I mean, program. We have a certain amount of money in it now, and I think we could put a little more money in it, and that would help get some more...
Emily.
So this actually led me to remember the most common question I have been asked on Reddit. And that was, a lot of people were asking, like, what's going on with El Camino? As you go up and down El Camino, you see a lot of vacant parcels that are closed down. And I think one of the things that we were looking at, we actually looked at that when we did a walking tour as part of our work for our housing element. Some of these sites, they're weirdly shaped. The permitting process is just so overwhelming for them to build something completely new. The design standards are difficult for such a small plot of land. I think one of the things we need to work on is the permitting and make it more flexible so that we could actually have an overall vision of it. And if you are flexible on exactly how you want each tiny plot of land to do, it's too prescriptive. So as we look at more general goals of that area, as we have a precise plan on it, that probably should be a little bit updated. But yeah, we can work on those design standards.
Thank you, Emily. Chris.
I think there are three things we could do pretty downtown that most folks would agree with. One is something we've already started to do, which is liberalize some of the uses on the ground floor to allow things like fitness centers and other, you know, active daytime uses that bring folks down and activate... and activate things throughout the day. The second is recognizing there are industries that are growing that aren't looking for Google-sized spaces, but smaller, you know, expansion facilities. So maybe they're based in San Francisco, but the gross receipts tax is really hitting them hard up there. And they're looking for peninsula or South Bay locations. And San Jose is taking advantage of this. And we should too, because we, now that Caltrain's electrified, we are the intersection of not just the freeways, but express train stops. And we can be that hub on the South Bay or the peninsula for some of those companies. And the third is the Moffitt Precise Plan and the Downtown Precise Plan, expanding the footprint of downtown and activation beyond just the core, but closer to El Camino and then down Moffitt, which is a longer-term thing. But I think that's really important to do.
Thank you. Nicholas.
As I touched on earlier, I think that we need to take advantage of the windows in vacant spaces. When there's a new store that is coming, the new owner will put up advertisements saying, December 2025, this is what you can expect. We should be taking advantage of all of those empty window spaces, either promoting the space and what it could look like or advertising for other businesses. That gets rid of the blight problem right there. I think we also need to liberalize the use of the street area in front of non-restaurant spaces. Outdoor dining is a fantastic setup for restaurants, but retail hasn't been able to use that space the same way. And so we need to look at how we can work with retailers to activate the space in the pedestrian mall, which everyone loves so much.
Thank you. Devin.
Thank you for the question. So where we work, where we eat, where we play, where we shop, it has all changed significantly since the pandemic. And we need to really modernize our business infrastructure to be able to address that change. When we look at downtown, the economic vitality strategy is an excellent plan, but it's huge. And there's only a few staff people who are dedicated to working on it. But one of the things that's positive about it is it includes metrics and goals that are hard numbers for council to try and work towards. For example, there's a goal of a two to four percent growth in the year-over-year sales tax receipts for downtown. Right now, that rate is negative eight point five percent. That's why you see those empty storefronts. The economic vitality strategy, however, the council had first asked that it just come back once a year as a written report. I believe council would agree, hopefully, to bringing it back at least every six months as an actual presentation to the public so we can stay focused on those metrics.
Thank you. Jose.
Thank you. So look, there's no easy answer, right? I wish I could tell you great news and positivity all the time, but sometimes you just deal with the reality that you have. You've got a bunch of layoffs that have happened in the tech sector. And because of that, that affects the way we look at downtown and our businesses overall within the life of the city. It's as simple as that. But there's opportunity here. And so I agree with honorable Mayor Pat Scholwaltzer and my fellow Commissioner Chris Clark. You bundle those two sets of ideas that they presented, plus the one that was presented to us as a whole in the report that said, we need more small minority business-based loans. And coupled with what we've been doing on commission, which is to change the zoning of certain sites so that we can have certain types of other businesses be available to, have as an opportunity for them to come in and participate in downtown. When you look at land ordinance issues like that and zoning, that gets the ball moving in the right direction. And finally, you use what Devin suggested. Every six months, it comes back for us for review so that we can follow through, be accountable, and get things done.
Thank you. John.
Four, four, four Castro Street. Top-floor restaurant. Something bold, something exciting. You don't know what it is. It's the tallest building on Castro Street. Got to start thinking out of the box sometimes to think, get the answers. How about a cooking school? I've got all these restaurants. Put something down there. I've been fortunate to be able to travel around the United States and Europe. And there's a place in Colorado, Boulder, Pearl Street. If anybody's ever seen it, go online and look at Pearl Street. I think we're concentrating too much on restaurants and what we could do for them. We needed to back off on restaurants because if you look at the streets, they're pretty cramped. And you walk down, I was there last night, and you walk down the street and you'll see tables going this way, chairs going this way. And it just doesn't, doesn't make you feel comfortable. So I think we need to start looking at other deals. Outside the box, parking garage, pickleball courts. Aren't everybody looking for pickleball courts? You go, hey, that's sort of crazy. How about a restroom? We don't even have a public restroom downtown. So we need to make it inviting.
Thank you. Okay, the next question. Mountain View has significant infrastructure projects planned, but funding them is challenging. If Measure G fails, what Plan B funding ideas do you have? And what would be your top priority projects? We will go in this order. Eric, Pat, Emily, Chris, Devin, Jose, John, Ida Rose, Nicholas. Eric.
Yeah. So I'm not even thinking about Measure G failing because I think we definitely do need it to pass. And if anything, you come out of this today on top of meeting every great candidate here, it's that Measure G needs to pass so that we can use those funds that could be allotted to our green spaces, our infrastructure, affordable housing, whatever we may need that to be. In addition to that, something that's been referenced in this conversation is passing Prop Five as well. This will be a great way for us to stop funding and stop being dependent on taxing y'all and making our big corporations or whomever accountable to paying, paying their fair share in order to be able to self-fund many of these projects as soon as interest goes low, goes down. And I mean, I think like a lot of the projects I would like to see built is with regards to the R3 zoning. Oh, and I think, sorry, my turn? Oh, I was okay? Okay. No.
Thank you. Pat.
Okay. Mountain View has significant infrastructure plans. If Measure G fails, what will we do? Well, we'll basically be where we are now. And that, we're trying to plan for the Mountain View of tomorrow. And if Measure G fails, then we'll have approximately ten million dollars less in the general plan than we had hoped for. And that will mean we will do things more slowly. But I don't think we should get too really upset about that. I mean, it would be bad. It would be much better if we have that money. But we have a staff that's very, very good at going after grants. The IRA and the BIL, Bipartisan Infrastructure Bill, they are huge sources of funding. So I think that whether Measure G passes or not, we need to make sure that we go after all of those funding opportunities that are available. I just got a letter from Anna Isher that said she had written a, she'd written a letter to Pete Buttigieg asking us for money for, more money for the railroad undercrossing.
Thank you, Pat. Emily.
So I agree with the past two commenters. But the good news is, is that overall Measure G is not our only funding source. We actually have a very strong budget with diverse revenue sources. And we have been fiscally responsible up to this point, and we will probably continue to be fiscally responsible. So, and we, like I was mentioning before, we will leverage our state and federal funding. We have actually started working a lot more harder and more smarter about getting some of that state and federal funding and accessing that funding. Some projects will probably be delayed until we get that funding. But if we plan for it, we can get the funding eventually because there are a lot of cities out there that we are doing so much better than. And we managed to get our projects done. We have a good history of getting our projects done. And so the state and the federal government, they like funding us because it'll look great on them, it looks great on us, and we get the stuff that we want done.
Thank you. Chris.
So if Measure G fails, I think three things will happen. One is, has been alluded to earlier, we'll have to delay some projects and reprioritize things, which is really unfortunate. But because we can only come back to you every couple of years for funding, we can't do it in an off-cycle year, we'll just have to delay things. The second is, we will come back to you, maybe with a transient occupancy tax increase or something different. But we will have to come back to you because we cannot have a structurally imbalanced budget. We need to maintain our AAA credit rating. That is, that is, that is one of the sacred cows at Mountain View. And then the third is, we'll leverage our state and federal legislative relationships to try and get whatever grant money we can. But I will say, there is risk there because as we saw with Caltrain electrification, when we had a certain administration come to power, they tried to block the funding for that, and it almost completely unraveled. And we had to travel to DC to beg for that funding with Dianne Feinstein and others. So hopefully Measure G passes.
Thank you. Devin.
Well, you know, the Questa Neighborhood Association candidate forum asked this question of a team of us, and we had to work on it together and come up with a solution. And that was a really helpful discussion. So part of what came out of that was, I mean, first thing you do if it doesn't pass this is an analysis of why. Is it something that we could tweak in the ballot language? Is it getting Prop Five passed to bring down the passage rate so that we could get it passed that way? And then bringing it back in the future or something like it or another type of tax? So it's not going to be that there aren't other options down the road. And I agree with my colleagues. This is the danger of going near the end on a question. We do have to advocate in other sources to get funding pulled down from state and federal grants. And we're going to also need to, you know, really prioritize what's the most urgent projects for us now. I lean towards implementing the Vision Zero Plan because we're losing people. We lost a child a few years ago who was hit on their way to school and passed away. So that's my priority.
Thank you. Jose.
I think when you look at this issue, it's pretty complex, no matter how you look at it, right? You have several opportunities, but you also have several challenges. One of the things that I look at is, that I'm proud of being able to have done in the past is just to be fiscally responsible, right? I was never part of a board that overspent. We always managed our budget really well. And we got bang for our buck for it. And that's the mentality I think we need. I think Measure, to rely on Measure G to pass, I criticize that. We should have never been there in the first place. We could have avoided this two years ago or even last year and presented sooner rather than later. Because now the onus is on you to vote for it. If that doesn't happen, then we're in a pickle. So we have to have better governance and better oversight on that and work with the city staff so that we're all accountable to the point that we don't need these last-minute resorts to try and get ourselves out of a pickle.
Thank you. John.
I hate to ask this, but it's been diluted a little bit because what was the original question?
Mountain View has significant infrastructure projects planned, but funding them is challenging. If Measure G fails, what Plan B funding ideas do you have? And what would be your top priority projects?
Okay. As a businessman, you know, when monies come short, you start cutting back. You look at where you can get the biggest bang for your buck, and you look at things that you can get accomplished. One of my goals, if I get onto the council, is to say, hey, you have too many things on your plate. When people were talking about, well, Measure G was going to fund so many different things, we got to go, it's not realistic. We need to take a priority. We should have started this priority years ago. We had all this money with all the development, money was coming in. We were flushed, we could boom, boom, boom. McKelvey Ballpark, 2020 was put in. Do you know that you can't sit in the bleachers and see home plate? Because we still, because it was designed wrong and we work with partners. We need to focus on what we can do with the money we have and get things done. Tighten it up, and so that as we go forward, things don't take five years. I know there was a death on El Monte. It took like four years to get a light in. That is not right.
Thank you. Ida Rose.
There are both near-term, immediate-term, and then two-year and beyond-term ways to look at this. But let's be honest, if Measure G passes, we still don't have enough money to do the things we want to do. And I think that's really important. In the near term, if we can, I agree completely with Pat. There is a lot of money at the federal level with the IRA and other acts. There are a lot of grant money, state money, other federal monies. There are partnerships with corporations and nonprofits that we should exploit. And it's something that council members are actually in a good position to help the city do, to have these relationships and to build them and to go find that money and help the city get it. With that said, in the longer term, when we can put up other measures, occupancy tax, ours is the lowest in the region. We could raise around five million dollars a year for modernizing ours. And of course, if Prop Five passes, I'd like to see some specific bonds around parks, safe, complete streets, and potentially even the crossing downtown.
Thank you. Nicholas.
Believe it or not, we have to act faster if Prop G doesn't pass or Measure G doesn't pass. Because like some of my fellow candidates have said, the money's out there at the federal and state level. When it comes to the Inflation Reduction Act, there's a tool called Direct Pay, which allows the city to be fully reimbursed for things like electrification. Mountain View recently started a partnership with Block Power to electrify our multifamily apartment buildings. If we invest now, before 2032, we can be reimbursed for significant investments from the Inflation Reduction Act. The other big source of funding is Proposition One, which passed in California a couple of years ago. That would house at-risk populations. If we're serious about affordable housing for at-risk populations, we should be applying for Prop One funding right now, not when Measure G comes out.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to our final question, and then we'll follow that up with your closing statements. So for this last question, ask and answer a question you wish we had asked. So we'll go in the following order. Chris, Nicholas, Devin, Jose, Emily, Ida Rose, Eric, Pat, and John. Go ahead, Chris.
So one thing that I'm surprised hasn't come up in most of the forums or even in some of the discussions is that in the, I believe in the next four years or so, the Live Nation lease for Shoreline is going to come up. And I think that presents a really interesting opportunity. So I don't know what the options will be. You know, maybe we just continue status quo. But I think, you know, that lease has been, those leases are so long-term, and so much has changed since the last one that we signed that I think it presents a really interesting opportunity for us to think about the use of that. Not that there can't still be concerts and other things, but maybe there are even better and revenue-generating opportunities for us to better utilize that gem that we have. So I think, I think it'll be really interesting to see where the council comes down and what our options are for that.
Thank you. Nicholas.
I'm surprised that we haven't talked about climate change more. My heart goes out to the families and the people who are in the path of Hurricane Milton tonight. I think that the city needs to focus on climate resilience and climate mitigation. We need to strengthen our fire department and our police department, who are our first responders when it comes to severe winter storms like we saw last year. I'm a user of cooling centers during extreme heat waves because my apartment building doesn't have air conditioning. We need to make sure that everyone knows where they can either find warmth or find air conditioning. And when it comes to climate mitigation, we need to look at serious electrification in every sector. Transportation makes up sixty percent of our carbon emissions. I think that we need to build a citywide EV charging network, especially downtown, where people want to park their car.
Thank you. You can finish your last sentence when the stop goes up, but no more sentences after that. Thank you. Devin.
So twenty percent of the students at Castro Elementary School are homeless. In our school district, before the pandemic, we had a hundred and seventy-five homeless children. And in the 2223 school year, that number was at three hundred and thirty-three. In the last school year, we hit that number in January, and we don't have our final data from this date yet. So I wish we'd talked about homelessness tonight because having children and families lose their homes is a cost for our entire community and our future as a city. We need to be looking at the case management that's going on at our RV parking sites as well as our transitional housing to make sure that we are moving families from those kind of stopgap solutions into permanent housing. And we need to be looking at our overall homelessness response because when we invest in children and families, we are investing in our future as a community together.
Thank you. Jose.
Why am I always after Devin? It's like, you know, come on, man.
I don't know.
But on a, on a serious note, though, I thought about this question. And this is a hard one, right? Look, I don't shy away from challenges. I relish them. I'm first gen in everything. The first of my family to do everything, graduate from high school, go to Santa Clara, be a board member, be on the EPC, be vice chair. be on the EPC, be vice chair, and I fight the fight. I push to rock up the hill because someone has to because that's what Mountain View is all about for me. And when I look at this question, I thought about, good governance for me is important. It's not just the vision, it's a reality. So why can't our electeds work together to figure something out for funding for the school district? Why can't our electeds be able to talk to one another one way or another, formally informed, to try and figure things out? Why is there an adversarial relationship between the staffs? For me, that's not good governance. For me, we deserve better. We need to sit down at the table, make the decisions because it's the right thing to do, though they're hard, but it's for the best interest of the city. That's what I've always been about, whether at the school board or the EPC. What's in the best interest for us all? Thank you.
Thank you. Emily.
One question that I would love to look at is campaign finance reform. One of the big things that we look at in politics in general is where is the money coming from? And we are, I'm very proud in Mountain View, we have a very robust voluntary expenditure limit. That means that we are capped, and I believe every one of us hold to that cap, that we're not going to spend more. Just next door in other cities, they're spending twice, three times what we're going to be spending in this election cycle. They're getting up to six figures in their elections, and that is just ridiculous. So I'm proud that Mountain View has kept that voluntary expenditure limit and that we are all holding to it. It was put in place in 2000, capped at 15,000, and increased every 3%. I'm proud that I, we also pushed for a Disclosure Act for the IEs that could come in, in our city, so that we know where that funding is coming from. I'm proud to have raised up to that limit and don't need to raise any money anymore.
Thank you. Ida Rose.
So something I think a lot about and wonder why we're not asked is why don't people ask about who we are beyond our qualification and our ideal ideas? For example, how do our values show up in our campaign? So I'll answer that. In my campaign, collaboration is front and center. I work with several candidates here on collaborative canvassing. I also came up with an innovative idea to work with some Mountain View Wisman School District candidates, and we are canvassing with each other extensively. We're even hosting an event with a combined messaging. If we can show how well we work together now, imagine how well we can work together in the future to help restore the relationship. And we're also very interested in making sure the MAGA candidates stay out. I focus also on inclusion. Thank you. I have a diverse team and canvass and multilingual, and do multilingual outreach. I'm compassionate. I will not speak ill of my fellow candidates or put them down in any way. Instead, I reach out and see how they're doing and take care of them as much as I can.
Thank you. Eric.
I mean, on top of just being asked how my day was, I mean, in all seriousness, um, gosh, I think for me, it does go back to the environment and reaching our carbon neutrality goals by 2035, or being ambitious enough to reach them by 2035. As some of you may know, SB 308 is stuck in committee right now. And should it pass, this would be a great way for us to start not only having the discussion about carbon removal, but also sequestration, especially when I'm thinking of like, this isn't just a Mountain View issue, this is a worldwide issue in that we need to start partnering up with our neighboring cities in order to share costs and also start targeting the global climate crisis because this also will have an impact in housing, our local environment. If we're worried about our green spaces, consider those gone if we don't address this issue in a timely manner. So I hope that in the near future, we are able to tackle this in a much more extensive manner.
Pat.
Well, I think the question you should ask is not just what we're going to do for the city, but what we're going to do for the region. Because when you're on city council, you also serve on all sorts of regional boards. At the moment, I serve on the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission, which is taking the lead on planning for sea level rise. We're sort of analogous to the Coastal Commission, but for San Francisco Bay. So my expertise as an engineer is very important here as well as there. I also serve on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board. And again, that's an institution we helped start. But it's, it's very important for us collectively meeting our carbon neutrality goals. I also am active in the National League of Cities. I serve on the Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Policy Committee. And we put together the policies that, that that institution and all of the member cities advocate on.
Thank you. John.
I'm amazed no one asked me about my bold housing idea. So I'll answer it. My bold idea is that the city buys apartments to take care of low-income housing, subsidized housing, rapid rehousing. And how can we do it and save money? There is an apartment, a website called LoopNet. There's an apartment complex in Mountain View, 22 units, at $8.4 million. Now, when you do the math, it's about $450,000 a door. Mount, and then we have complete control of who goes there, how we can deal with it, who's, and we solve some problems. Mountain View has spent $800,000 or more for the Crestview Hotel that is going to be shared with the county. If we own the property, and we have the property, we can make it denser, we can build, you know, rent it out. There's many options to us, and we have control. And that's how it's one way to get done. Buy the property, pay it with bonds, rental money.
Thank you. Okay, now we are at the point for closing statements. Each candidate has one minute, and we will go in the following order. Devin, Nicholas, Jose, Emily, Ida Rose, Pat, John, Eric, and Chris. So Devin, go ahead.
The first time I'm first is at the very end. So I'd like to, you know, be very clear that it has been an honor to serve on the school board and also to work with the city of Mountain View. Yes, we have a challenging issue when it comes to the shoreline funding because we're all facing economic uncertainty in the future, and there's a lot of money there. But there are so many ways in which we partner successfully all the time. And I have a huge amount of respect for the council members here tonight, for everyone on council, as well as for city staff. When I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, I learned a lot about trees because it's also the Urban Forestry Board. And the canopy that grows from a sapling that's planted over time really benefits our entire community, and you can see that in 10, 20, 30 years. The same perspective applies to our children and families. When we are investing in our children and families, it's going to pay off over the next 30, 40, 50 years and for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas.
Since this is my last opportunity to do so, I would like to thank each of the candidates for running for public office. Thank you to Pat, Chris, Devin, Ida Rose, John, Eric, Emily, and Jose for stepping up to the plate and running for city council. I think that I have a unique background, professional experience, and policy platform to make an impact on city council from my first day on the job. I hope that you get to check out my website, nicholasformv.com. And finally, I would like to thank you all for being here. This is what makes democracy work. And I think to myself, who did we not see here tonight? How can we get them in the room? Because my motto is, together we succeed. I think that the best policy is made when everyone has a seat at the table. I look forward to meeting each and every one of you.
Thank you. Jose.
Speaking of everyone being a part of a table, that's what my campaign's all about. I believe that underrepresented neighborhoods where I live, on Latham Street in California, in apartments for the last 20 years, need representation. We need new voices at City Hall. We need new perspectives. I've been able to do that at the school board, I'm doing that on the EPC. I represent both renters and homeowners alike because I live and breathe the team mentality. That's how I grew up. That's how I was able to succeed and compete. We have to rely on one another to be able to get things done. We need to believe in each other again. But we need to be effective. That's why my motto has always been responsibility, accountability, and follow-through because you have one shot to make a difference. If you don't speak up at the desk when the moment comes for you to speak up on behalf of someone or something or a cause, you lose your moment. And with that, your effectiveness. We're leaders. We have to be fearless. So I ask you to help me number three in the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and the Mountain View Voice, I believe. I have been very fortunate to have been mentored by so many people with the League of Women Voters and outside of it. I think about back in 2015, when I first started going to council meetings, sitting in the back row with Julie Lovins, who was the observer for the time. I remember how in 2022, the last candidate forum for Mountain View City Council was moderated by Julie Cates, who's no longer with us. I think about how we are ancestors' greatest dreams, and I feel like I am, as we continue forward, we continue to build and mentor and continue to grow. I'm very fortunate to have the endorsement of the Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, Planned Parenthood, League of Conservation Voters, Mountain View Chamber. I have a long list, so I don't know if I'm going to get through all of it. South Bay Labor Council, Senator Becker, Joe Semidian, and the entire Board of Supervisors in Santa Clara County. And I hope to earn the rest of your support by November 5.
Ida Rose.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Barkodaro Media, Mountain View Voice for being here tonight and sponsoring this wonderful event. And thank you to all of you. The people of Mountain View is my why, the reason I'm running, to make a better world for all of us. I have pragmatic experience grounded in years of doing the hard work. I have a proven track record of thinking outside of the box to find solutions to our biggest problems and building relationships and uniting many players to make that happen. I'm tenacious, I listen well, and I readily balance competing interests of people to find win-win solutions in every case I'm involved in. I am compassionate and passionate. I love this city. I love Mountain View. I love its people. I love our past, our present, and the future we will create working together. Thank you. You can learn more about me at idaroslevester.com.
Thank you. Pat.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. I think it's been a great discussion. And I also want to thank everybody who stepped up. It's a lot of work to run for council, and you learn a lot on the trail. And I really appreciate everyone for doing that. It's great for our community. I'm proud to be working to make Mountain View a community for all. As a civil engineer, I've collaborated across disciplines and agencies. As your council member, I apply those skills to regional challenges such as protecting against climate change, building new housing with minimal displacement, enhancing transit, reducing and preventing homelessness, and making our city more just. I spent my career as a civil servant, so I know how the patchwork quilt of government agencies in the Bay Area works. The legislators I worked with while on council, Anna Issue, Josh Becker, Mark Berman, and Joe Semidian have all endorsed me, as have the League of Women Voter, no, not the League, sorry, the League of Conservation Voters, the Sierra Club, Planned Parenthood, and the South Bay Labor Council.
Thank you.
As we conclude tonight, I want to leave you with this. Mountain View is a city that I care deeply about. From raising a family, running a business, to serving the city council, every decision I've made has been driven by the desire to improve the lives of our residents. We face challenges ahead, slowing revenues, the need for housing across all income levels, and ensuring our public safety is well-founded. But with those challenges comes opportunity to build a stronger, more vibrant community. I will continue to apply my experience as a successful business owner, a problem solver, and a collaborative leader to move Mountain View forward. I'm proud to be endorsed by the voices like Joe Semidian for my ability to collaborate with others, the Sierra Club for my environmental positions, the firefighters for the support I give them at all times, and the Los Altos Town Cryer for my business background. I ask for your vote so that together, we can keep Mountain View the best place it could be for all, and I thank you.
Thank you. Eric.
Thank you all so much for attending this evening. I mean, it's such a privilege to not only sit with y'all but alongside these leaders who have served the community tremendously. Honestly, I've seen them more than I've seen my own family by this point. But honestly, one of the things that's captured my eye about Mountain View has always been this idea that despite our different interest on what we want to tackle, ultimately, we all care about one another and want to see each one of us prosper in different ways, but ultimately as a whole community as well. As you all listen, I mean, Mountain View is also at a critical juncture where decisions need to be made on housing, transportation, sustainability, public safety. And these will not only have the impacts on our current lives, but they will impact future generations to come. So I hope to count on your support. I'm proud to be endorsed by Joe Semidian, Planned Parenthood, the Labor Council, our local workers here at SEIU 521, daycare workers as well, so.
Thank you. Chris.
So as you've seen tonight, we have a really great group of candidates this year. Democracy is very healthy in Mountain View, thank goodness. And the good news is that you can vote for almost half of us. I humbly request one of your four votes. With your support, we can maintain a healthy level of continuity over the next years while also welcoming new leaders. We can have both. I have a long and proven track record of putting our city first. I listen to all perspectives. I analyze the facts, options, and paths forward, and then I make a decision I feel is best for not just our current residents, but future residents, even when that means taking a political risk. That approach, along with my reputation for building consensus, is why I'm supported by our local elected leaders at all levels of government, as well as our neighborhood leaders, our public safety employees, the Business Community Chamber of Commerce, and many former mayors and advocacy groups who span the political spectrum. I hope I've earned your vote this evening, and I look forward to continuing to serve you. You can learn more at electchrisclark.com. Thank you.
Thank you.